Hello.
Okay, oh.
Hi.
Fantastic. So we are here for a meeting of the Lake County Board of Health Tuesday, February sixth, two thousand and twenty four at two P M. We have two agenda items. And we can turn to the first one if Kelsey is ready, or do you need a minute?
I need one minute and then.
Yeah, that's excellent.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to do too many things.
No, no, that's.
Can you tell us about the beach jerking?
The next meeting. The next meeting happening on the twenty second, I'm not available, just be quiet.
Okay.
You can probably gather what's happening there.
On February twenty second?
I thought there was a meeting.
Well, you said it was a motorcycle.
A board of health meeting?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so what I'm proposing today is like the the O W T S regulations as they relate to short term rentals. But to make sure that we have enough public notice, we needed to have a meeting that week or later.
Okay.
To have an official vote and approval.
Okay, so we'll discuss all the things that will just make a sit. Okay, great.
Yeah, so today is to like explain it all to you guys so that you have time to make an informed decision some point in the future once we figure out the right date.
Thank you.
So.
It can be, it can still be that day as long as they both are available and will be here.
That's true, yeah.
Okay, cool.
I was just letting you know that I will not be here and I will do my best to give you any other feedback.
Yeah.
For them.
I look forward to it.
Okay.
It does, it does overlap with the next C C I, I think that, yeah, C C I Legislative Steering Committee stuff, so we may wanna look at moving here.
Tommy.
Planning a different date than the twenty second or twenty third. So.
Okay, because it's been noticed.
Oh.
For the twenty second based on it can't even work that out scheduling, because it, yeah, it's, it's a public hearing, so it's been noticed.
Okay, well, then we'll be okay.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
I can't change.
Yeah, I mean. No, no, I appreciate your offer of.
You can, you could open a table to a date certain, like if, so like if it, if it really is too difficult, you'd still, since you have a a noticed hearing that day, somebody could open and then just do a tabling.
I mean, and that could be depending on do, if have a controversial, I think it might be, it could be like ten minutes, twenty minutes.
Yeah.
And then it could also be two hours.
I mean, from, do you think there'll be a lot of public comment?
Um, there will be some.
Some, okay.
I, well, I don't think that, um, I think, so what we're gonna need to start, and David will be able to explain that a little bit more, we, we have affected currently licensed in, in the changes to the regulation, we currently have a segment of our licensed S T Rs with this little fact, so we need to notify them that there's something.
Gotcha, okay.
So they may want to, um, talk about it, but we need to kind of today, see what kind of, um, feedback that we can gain from the board of health, so we can kind of, because it will also be aligning with our short term rule regulations and disallow seepage pits.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, and I mentioned that C C I, I guess, not, I mean, yeah, we can work on that. Um, okay, so I think.
I'm ready.
Give the floor to Kelsey Matty to give an update on staffing, operational changes, office space, and some community care.
Awesome, cool, so I can probably give a pretty quick update and then wanna be available if anyone has any questions, otherwise we can move on. Um, just so the group knows, I've talked to Tim about this in Janine, um, we haven't really had any clinical services available for the past two and a half weeks. Um, we are resuming clinical services tomorrow, our new clinical programs coordinator, Ashley, um, started yesterday. And she is gonna be wonderful, um, she is training all day tomorrow with Taryn and they have back to back patients for six hours, so that will be an excellent training opportunity. Um, and she has experience in, um, immunizations and blood lead and S T I testing, so hopefully it should be a pretty quick turnaround on training. She's very competent, so that is very exciting, um, she will be working from Mondays through Thursdays, which means those will be our regular clinical days. Right now, we won't have anyone on Fridays, the care clinic is there on Fridays, I'm hoping that they can just take patients where we can schedule them on a Monday through a Thursday. As we work through some other staffing things, um, Heidi Mitchick is still on F M L A through the beginning of March, so that is why we don't have another clinical person on right now. Um, we are holding off on hiring an office manager, chief deputy registrar, that was a Dean Castillo's position. I wanted to get Ashley fully trained and evaluate what our need actually looks like once we have a full time clinician back in the office. And, um, we now have a part time admin and D H S just moved upstairs, so we are considering sharing some type of a bilingual admin position. And we wanna make sure that we are really evaluating the operation before hiring someone. So we're holding off on that right now until we can kind of get in the group of everyone's operation. Does anyone have questions about public health staffing?
Um, tuberculosis, we're gonna shift that off to the state.
That is my plan, and the patient that we saw came back negative, so that should be all closed shortly.
And so the referral process then for the clinicians in town will then be to directly contact the state, or do you still want them funneled through you?
Um, I need to figure out the process, um, but I will connect with you on that.
Let me know if I can.
Help with that, I will, thank you. Heidi Mitchick has been monitoring any T V cases, we get a lot of inactive T V cases, so they have to go through monitoring, they're not contagious, but they have to go through the whole process. So, we are, we don't currently have any, but hope it's not a method, so we are going to, um, get that process figured out here. Um, other questions?
Done with it?
Okay, cool, and then a quick care clinic update, um, they are providing clinical services now on both Thursdays and Fridays. Referrals are going very well, so we are referring our Title X patients to the care clinic to get their full range of services there. They offer the same sliding scale program for all of that, and with their P A, they can do well woman exams and everything. We will still offer S T I testing, pregnancy tests, things like that, Monday through Wednesday, um, but anything beyond that, we'll refer to the care clinic on Thursdays and Fridays. Um, and then the care clinic also has behavioral health services available at our office on Thursdays and Fridays as well. They just expanded that one week ago to be two days. And our internet is not working well enough to meet the minimum needs for the care clinic and us, so they are able to see their full schedule of patients each day.
And their plan of expansion is still start September?
Yes.
So, uh, on foot services five days a week.
By the end of.
By September.
By September of twenty twenty four.
Awesome. Um, remind me, the, are the same folks that are in the school, like, are those the same behavioral health folks, are they sharing people at all?
It's the same, it's the same group, but a different clinician.
It is. Oh, it is, okay, different clinician, different behavioral health folks, okay.
But it's the same organization.
Yes, I under, yeah, I just wanted to know if you, I don't know.
Yeah, so the collaboration, I think is what you're asking, um, between the two clinicians certainly is there. So, for example, if they have someone who can't be serviced at the, at the school based health center, um, because of scheduling or timing, um, then they would share that client with
Okay.
the services that are happening in the other location, so they're working collaboratively.
I was also just wondering, you know, if people have had experience with school based health center or want to start a relationship with those folks, knowing whether or not they're the same, because if, you know, I mean, maybe you wanna have a different relationship with an individual and it's not working for your kid or something.
Yeah, and so the, the, um, um, uh, marketing of this, it's just been a very soft rollout, because they don't want to be overwhelmed, which they think they will be if they start advertising, you know, right away, and so, um, uh, they're not doing that, but certainly if there are specific patients that need that information, that's being communicated with them. As soon as they're up and running, five days a week, um, I imagine that that will be one in the same.
Thank you.
I don't, um, sorry, I should probably know this, but are we, are you still doing like flu and COVID vaccines, is that like a walk in thing?
Yeah, we'll resume those clinics next week.
Okay.
And Ashley will be there, she's working for tens, so we will be able to accommodate folks for vaccinations forty hours a week.
Okay.
And it's all vaccinations, so childhood vaccinations and tetanus shots and the whole thing.
Yes. But we will resume the walk in clinic as well.
Cool.
Just wanted to get trained before we opened up for walk-ins.
There.
Okay.
Okay.
Those did slow down substantially, um, once we got towards the end of January. In December, we were seeing upwards of like twenty or thirty people per clinic.
Okay.
And then it got down to closer to like two to five. But we will open that back up, Ashley will be there, and I think having a walk in time is valuable.
I know just anecdotally, like that sign up on Highway twenty four, I, people were like, oh, right.
Well, people stop and they're like, hey, I have ten minutes, can I get my flu shot?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It has a normal atrophy that happens, you know, the people who want to be vaccinated, that usually get vaccinated earlier in the season and then.
And we'll put the ad back in the paper, um, just wanted to make sure, we had to cancel quite a few of them, so I didn't wanna advertise until I felt very confident in our staffing of that.
And the breastfeeding, um, has been taken down?
Um, yes, yeah, I took that out of the paper.
Okay, that was, what am I having?
Um, is anybody working on, uh, harm reduction and prevention in particular? Just doing, continuing the Narcan and those kinds of things?
Yeah, so I've been working with the Harm Reduction Coalition, we're meeting every other month. Lana from the library is, um, helping spearhead that. And High Rockies Harm Reduction will start coming to the library parking lot the fourth Saturday of February one. We are doing a very, they are doing a very soft rollout of that in February, just to kind of see how it goes, so it's not being advertised. It is, the information is on our Harm Reduction page on the public health website, but we're not like pumping it out.
Okay.
Until after we see how the first one goes. The Sheriff's Department is also very active in those conversations, which has been very helpful, Shane Doherty, who's an evidence technician, so not like uniformed officer participates in the Harm Reduction Coalition and is kind of like the, um, connection there, which is really helpful to have someone who's not an arresting officer be a part of that work.
And the Narcan program is part of this is still active in the hospital, which is.
Okay.
And we still give out free Narcan at public health.
Is there some money that I can tap into for the regional opioid?
I have that meeting on my calendar.
Scriptings. Okay, great.
I can share that with you, do you wanna come to that?
No, I've been attending, I was attending with Colleen.
Okay.
And Colleen dropped off. So I, I did it in the interim, and then I just wanna make sure somebody like perpetually can attend those meetings so that we're not missing out on that regional approach to it as well.
Yes, I have the February meeting on my calendar, it will be my first one.
I have a bunch of steering committee meetings from that also, I don't know if you want me to just share what I have with you, if, we can meet offline, but.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Okay.
And then our local we, dollars from that, like, um, we've been utilizing for, um, emergency housing for folks who have impacted by opioid addiction. And I think we're gonna propose, um, we use some Tana funds to be able to bring, um, the High Rockies Harm Reduction here on Saturdays. I think we can also see if that, our local dollars could be used for some of that.
Okay, sounds good. Awesome. Sounds good.
Okay. Think we're good, thank you, Kelsey.
Yeah, thank you.
Glad to hear.
Any questions?
And, yeah, uh, we can move on to the short term rental, O W T S.
Right on.
Brief.
Good to be.
Brief, and as curious as we are about beef jerking, we probably shouldn't discuss that in our.
It, it, it sounds pretty, uh, interesting, so you might wanna know what.
Yeah.
So, yeah, David, I think you have the, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Um, who has access to the?
I do.
You can, so you can drive.
Yeah, if you want to, I, did you email it to the?
Yeah, it should already be there at the bottom.
Okay.
Thank you.
There you go.
Just right click to.
You can just click like normal on your, on the mouse to go to the next slide, so, yeah.
Um, thank you guys, um, so what I'm about to present, um, has came out of the Short Term Rental Moratorium, Policy and Procedure, um, process, um, we found that with our recommendations for changes in short term rental policy, we need to have kind of reciprocal, um, regulations, uh, in our O W T S regulations that kind of support what we're asking, or proposing in the short term rental policies. So, and dive into it. So, the first thing is that we, um, are creating, um, are asking to create a basically a review process of any short term, when people are applying for a short term rental license, if they have a septic system, they will need to have a further review of, of what their septic system is doing and what it's comprised of, and how old it is, and what condition it is. This is primarily because we found that a significant portion of our current short term rental license holders utilize septic systems, so currently we have a hundred and fifteen, um, active licenses as of yesterday, um, and of those, you know, seventy three percent have septic systems of varying ages. So we wanna make sure that, you know, because we have this high proportion of septic systems that are being used for commercial purposes, we get, you know, get an eye, get an eye on them and make sure they're in good, good standing. The kind of next part of the regulations is to, um, ensure the occupancy of the property in question aligns with what their septic system is designed for. So part of the review process would be to look at what documentation we have of, of the system in our paper records or digital records, basically, to find out what, find out what records we have and use that to make an informed decision on what the occupancy of that short term rental license is gonna be. We have received requests for higher occupancy, so, for instance, like if the system was designed for a three bedroom house and they're like, hey, I'm gonna put a bunch of, uh, couches that can pull out into beds in my living room, will you allow me to have fifteen people in a ten person bedroom house or a ten person house? Like, no, unless you can prove to us that your system can handle that. So, the second portion of this is like, hey, you need to prove to us that your system can handle that higher occupancy. Either, and if you can't, then you need to basically hire an engineer and have someone review the system and give us a stamped report that says, hey, yes, this system can handle more than what it was originally designed for. So basically, we need to have good documentation of what the systems are comprised of, and then the occupancy that'll be approved will relate to that. The next portion is that we're gonna be, um, requiring that the systems be inspected, um, and pumped on a varying basis. So, due to the fact that we only have a couple inspectors, like three that are active in the county, and a hundred and fifteen some odd licenses, it would be really impractical to require all of them to have an inspection this year. So, we're starting off that in year twenty twenty five, so when folks apply for a license in twenty five, if they have had their system inspected and cleaned in the last five years, we will accept that. In twenty six, we will only, um, we will accept, um, inspections that are three years old. So, we're, we didn't require inspections for twenty four, we're requiring at least five year old inspections in twenty five. In twenty six, a little more strict, so that we, um, have an inspection within the last three years. So that's, we give people time and have some flexibility, but get more stringent as we move on into the future. There will be some folks that apply, uh, after the end of the short term rental moratorium for a twenty four license. And for those folks, if they, if there is some sort of hardship beyond their control to get an inspection, we can be flexible, we'll be flexible, and we'll use what information we have available to make an informed decision. What historical records we have. But we want to make sure that these systems do get inspected at some point, or have, or will, will have been inspected moving into the future. The next kind of component is requiring that any repairs.
Sorry, can I ask you a question on the timing, is, is three year, I mean, that, I felt like annual was almost recommended for like pump out, or is, is three years like, okay?
Yeah, so the, the E P A recommends that septic systems get pumped out every three to five years, depending on level of use. So if you have like a three bedroom house and it's just two people living there, there, they should probably get their system pumped out in like five plus years. If it's a three bedroom house being occupied at its max of like six people, three years is mostly is recommended. So, we thought that, you know, given that the federal government says this is the recommended time period, we, we can align ourselves with that.
Okay, okay.
Generally.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a sense of how, where on the spectrum of norms and that, that was lying, that makes sense.
Yeah, and we figured as well that with the available like third party inspectors that we have working in the county and in the neighboring counties, like the burden of, of them and their schedule, like, those folks are working seven days a week for the entire summer already. And so if we are increasing their workload and their business, they might enjoy that, they might not. So giving, giving them time to adjust and property owners' time to adjust is kind of what we are hoping for.
Yeah, great.
Yes, so repairs. Oftentimes, we see with our kind of aging systems that there, there might be repairs that come up in those inspections. Minor repairs are typically replacement of, um, the risers, which is that black kind of pillar thing with the lid, green lid, or lines from the house, as you kind of see over here. Those are pretty minor, those can usually be fixed in a day or two. And so if repairs are needed, we couldn't still, we would still issue the license, but with conditions like, hey, you need to get this fixed in three months. Or however much time is a reasonable, reasonable amount of time. Major repairs would be replacement of the tank, whether it's too old, it's got cracks in it, or, or if the field has, is also too old, no longer functioning. Those major repairs, we would not issue a license to that person if the system needed a major repair until such time as they, you know, had, had fixed that major repair. And so with the minor repairs, they can still be issued a license with conditions, the major repairs, we'd have to wait and they would have to, you know, end up in the potential pool of available, if there are available ones. So, the sooner they can get things fixed, the more likely is they can get, have a license. The other point we were asking for is educational requirements. A lot of visitors to our county are not necessarily coming from places that are utilize septic systems. They may not have the knowledge, understanding of how they function and what you can put in them and what you can't. And so we would recommend having educational materials both in the kitchen and the primary bathroom of the property, so that, you know, residents or clients visiting our county and visiting these systems, you know, have an opportunity to, to learn more about how best to use the system.
Is that information that we would provide and give them?
Um, I don't think we've settled on that. It could be very, very much something that we, we hand out to when they receive their license, we give them these cards and say, hey, or we could put it on the property owner and have them be responsible for making sure these are there.
I think we want consistency of information.
Yeah, that's what I was going for, not necessarily like us, I mean, I guess we could supply the, the volume, the number of them, but I was thinking more along the lines of the content of what was being shared.
Yeah, this, um, this little do's and don'ts guide right there is from the E P A and what we, what goes out to folks already when they are going through the transfer title process. So, that's kind of what we would recommend. It has all the information you really need. The whole document's like ten pages, but this is the more concise version. So, yeah, we can still figure out when and who is responsible for providing that documentation, and just, as long as it's posted, that's what we want, or, or hoping for. Which brings us to the more contentious one of our recommendations. So we are, um, proposing that S T R license not be granted to properties utilizing a seepage pit. Seepage pits are a type of soil treatment area, they were, um, most common pre two thousand. They were the primary method of, uh, soil treatment, um, prior to then. However, they don't do a very good job of treating wastewater. The state, um, in their twenty seventeen regulations has very strict, um, rules regarding repairs to them and, um, replacement of them, it's more or less, hey, you have to prove that it's not gonna do any more harm, um, than it already does. And with a whole lot of other stipulations, including approval from you all, um, to allow them to continue to be used.
That's in general, not just for a short term?
Not for, yeah, just in general, um, so typically, so typically, soil treatment areas, the, the primary treatment is via bacteria. The bacteria need oxygen to reproduce and, and live and consume the waste. But oxygen doesn't really penetrate the soil, um, after about four feet. Seepage pits, they are typically, uh, way deeper than that, eight, ten. In this picture, this one is fourteen feet deep, um, this is the design of it. It's forty five feet long, fourteen feet deep, six feet in width. So, if the primary treatment is happening in the top four feet, you know, the vast majority of the soil treatment area is not actually treating the wastewater, it's just dispersing it, it's letting it move through the soil, but you know, the nasty, icky, gross stuff that makes us sick, you know, isn't actually necessarily getting removed. So, we, they're really not allowed to be produced anymore, um, most, um, engineers don't even bother with them. They were being produced because they have a very shallow or very small footprint. This one in this picture, uh, is twelve by twenty one feet, so that's, you know, less than half the size of this room, um, whereas modern systems would be shallow and wide. So like double the size of this room, it would be about the typical size of a normal, modern system. So, that's what modern systems look like, these are outdated, um, and not, not doing great.
So, so there is always a septic tank, this is just the, what, instead of a leach field?
Yeah, yeah, so lots of different names for the treatment area, so I shifted to S T A. But yeah, these, um, this one is called a dry well, um, this is called a seepage pit, they're more or less the same type of treatment area. Lots of different names.
But the seepage pit isn't getting like completely.
No, there's still a tank, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
If there was no tank, that would be the, even worse.
Yeah, yeah, that's what was in my head and I was like, whoa.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there is definitely some treatment that happens inside the tank, um, there is anaerobic bacteria that lives in there that'll eat stuff, but what's coming out still needs treatment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not disputing that.
This page gets into, um, how soil treatment areas are sized. You're welcome to look over it on your own time, but. But basically, seepage pits, because only the top four feet of them are really treating anything, you know, less than half of the treatment area is actually being used for what it needs to be. Who this is going to impact, if we were to disallow seepage pits, right now, we have documentation that there's twenty-three of the current license holders that have seepage pits. Additionally, there's thirteen properties that we have no records of whatsoever. So we don't really know what they got going on, which could be they're really, really old or records were lost. But that could be potentially additional properties that have seepage pits. So this means that if we go this route, bare minimum twenty-three properties are going to need to do some major work.
Do you know where they're located in the county?
Uh, everywhere. Pretty wide distribution.
The condos at Grand West?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So what was that?
Condos at Grand West?
Okay.
Yeah, so the Grand West properties, we have paper records for, I think, a third of them. But they were all installed at the same time by the same installer. So stands to reason that they're pretty much the same systems for each of the different structures. And they do utilize seepage pits as their treatment area. Yeah.
So sorry, was, sorry, this is screen slide before the uh, modern, oh.
This one?
Yeah, what's the modern?
So this, this is a layout of like a modern kind of system. So when calculating the size of the soil treatment area, you take the wastewater flow from the house divided by the infiltration rate of the soil. So how the water percolates through the soil and you get a square footage amount. Modern systems utilize horizontal space primarily. They don't really factor in vertical space to get that size requirement because the treatment happens pretty much at the surface of where the water is hitting. Historically, seepage pits got that calculation and use vertical space to get to that amount. But we, yeah.
Is it, is it a different, is there a tank? I mean, I'm just imagining the better method of this might not fit on many properties. We're getting there? Okay, okay.
Yeah. So I'm not sure if I have a slide specific to that, but we, so the smallest lot that we have found that has a seepage pit is point four-six acres. So all the pan arc lots are like a third of an acre and there's modern systems going in there. So in, so we haven't necessarily found a specific example where a modern system would not fit. There may be some, but we haven't yet seen that hardship because we we haven't gotten to the enforcement part of things yet, requiring people to fix their system.
Look, I mean, on head to head, depending on like where the houses and neighbors, you could still hit design problems, right?
Potentially, especially if, you know, you have slope involved, a neighbor's wells, wetlands. There could definitely be some hardships that a property owner, for no fault of their own, wouldn't necessarily be able to put in a modern system. And thankfully, the state gives some flexibility for the Board of Health to make exceptions and reductions in size. In terms of other options, we have.
And and sorry on that point, like, I mean, if, like, just walking down the path of here, someone did build a new system, but it had to be a little smaller or have some, you know, you could you could issue the SDR license. I mean, you'd know the design, you'd issue the SDR license to match the asphalt size.
Yeah, yeah, so if we have, if what they are proposing in terms of fixing their system, you know, is has an engineer design, meets the regulations, doesn't need a variance, you know, we we can, we can make that happen. Additionally, in Lake County, traditionally, we've had systems that produce a treatment level one wastewater. So that's everyone's system in the county produces a a treatment level one wastewater. There are, however, systems that, higher-level treatment systems that produce a higher quality effluent. So the wastewater coming out is, it might be as dirty as our creek water coming out of the the lake or lake water. They tend to be more expensive because there's a lot more involved. There's pumps that push up air into the tank that helps bacteria grow, break down the waste. So basically, what is coming out is pretty dang clean. And you don't need as much soil treatment area to treat the the end result. So if you, if the wastewater coming out of everyone's tank currently comes out brown, it's coming out pretty clear out of these higher-level treatment systems. So if they're, if a property owner had a hardship where a modern treatment field would not fit, they could opt opt for thi- this option. It, they are expensive. They come in different, different types of products, tanks, such as this one right here. That's going to run you fifteen to twenty grand just for the tank itself. However, there are different products approved by the state that are basically inserted into the existing tank and push that oxygen in, help those bacteria grow. And it doesn't produce as clean as something like this, but clean enough that you could still get those reductions in soil treatment area size. Yeah. So back up just a little bit, in terms of options for people that have seepage pits. You know, the first one is they could maintain that place as a primary residence and they don't have to fix their system. Or a long-term rental, because then you don't really have any sort of restrictions on long-term rentals pertaining to septic systems. So they don't necessarily have to do anything if they just don't want the license at this point. If they want a license, they would need to either replace the soil treatment area with a modern system if they have the space for it. Or install a higher-level treatment, some sort of higher-level treatment system that cleans the wastewater to a reasonable safe level. Okay. Um, I think that's it. Thoughts, questions, comments?
Are there any options available for making the, sorry, I have the words wrong, but like this, so the, what I think is the leach field. Are there better options there you got to deal with in the tank?
Say that again?
Well, I I mean, I mean, you you're trying to treat stuff better, I wonder, I wonder if there are options, are there available options to make the leach field work better? Or are all the options upstream in the primary tank?
Without putting in a new system, there's there's things called like crust busters where they, like, they they pump like nitrogen gas or different gases into underneath the soil to break up and loosen it up to create space for oxygen to infiltrate. However, yeah, it's kind of like a remediation process. But I haven't seen or heard of it actually being used outside of the front range. Yeah, though typically when we see seepage pits, though, we're talking about a soil treatment area that's been used for thirty, twenty-five to twenty, greater than twenty-five years. Most of them are like forty plus.
Yeah.
And so at that point, the soil is so compacted and full of gunk that, you know, you can try and use, you know, pumping air into it and like fracking it more or less. But it's not, it's gonna might get you a couple of years, but it's it's not giving you twenty plus. It's, you know, it's usable for maybe a couple of years. So.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah.
When, so this is, this is the ideal modern system, that's the higher treatment system. How, you know, you're talking about a situation where it is using the ground and the naturally occurring like percolation or density. How does this get, like, that can't necessarily replace, we need to relocate in order for that to function. When you do this, you can replace this or this really in theory maybe never needs replaced because the effluent is so much in a a better quality?
So there are two parts, like, so if this was, let's say, installed in your property tomorrow. This system, because it's shallow and introducing a lot of oxygen, a lot of bacteria, is going to last a long time. Forty-plus years. If at, after forty years, this starts failing, most systems in Lake County use a sand filter, so they dig up the native soil, replace it with a couple of feet of sand and these plastic infiltrators are placed on top. Theoretically, you could dig that up, remove the infiltrators, dig up that sand and put new sand in. So theoretically, you could reuse that same space years down the road. And the plastic infiltrators, unless they are crushed in something, they could still be used. So this infrastructure theoretically could be reused at some point in the future. Yeah, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it does, and and those actually like deliver the water across the area?
Yeah, so this.
Do they hold, how much of it do they hold in there?
Yeah, so these, how these function, the black part is basically a dome like this. And there's PVC pipe that runs through the center of it. It usually hangs from up top or sits on top of the gravel below. And when, those systems are typically pressurized, so wastewater is pumped from the tank into that space and the wastewater splashes up inside that dome and spreads out. So it evenly distributes distributes itself across the whole surface of that space. So, you know, one spout might be putting out a gallon over the course of, you know, a couple of hours, but it's spreading over, you know, twelve square feet. So spreads it and allows it to be treated across the whole space really nicely.
How don't those freeze? Because they're not very below our frost? Sorry, again, like.
No, no. So the because, so that's that's a great question. So there's two things that allow them not to freeze. One, it's, there's no standing water. If if it's being pressurized and spraying up, anything that's left in the line actually drains back to the tank within a couple of minutes. There is the potential, if, you know, as the ground settles over time, those pipes get a belly in them, they might have a spot that some ice gets in there. But the wastewater in the tank should be below the frost line and is getting at least a little bit of warm water from the house. So the tanks should never freeze, but if there is a belly in the line somewhere, it could have, could have a freeze in it and a break.
And so a problem, like this could be put in theory into an existing space, but the problem is that the spaces have never been that large. And if they're going vertical instead of horizontal, you you really, everyone's just kind of needs to build, to build new, there's not a lot, unless something like that. Is that kind of a standard size or?
Um, these come in thousand to two-thousand gallon sizes. So thousand gallon tank is the minimum size up to a three-bedroom house. And then every additional bedroom increases the size of the tank by hundred-and-fifty gallons?
Every additional bedroom?
Every additional bedroom, so a four-bedroom house needs a twelve-fifty, five-bedroom fifteen-hundred, and so on.
Okay. Makes sense.
And with increased size, increased cost.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So this, so the main kind of portions of what we're proposing is, you know, hey, we need to review the historical documents of your system. We need inspections on a sliding scale time period in terms of like frequency. And then educational materials required in in each of the properties. And then seepage pits, which we believe is going to be the most impactful to, you know, our current current stock of license holders.
Is the proposal to, I mean, we put this in place, are we giving them some sort of grace period outside? Or is it, I'm sorry, just said that in my imagination a lot, because it is like twenty-twenty-six is kind of your drop day.
That's going to be the 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 more, most stringent is going to be twenty-six on. So license holders that we already have documented that have seepage pits, they already have a twenty-four license. They are good for the year. Once, and if if this is what gets accepted as the rule, they will absolutely be notified this year that, hey, we've identified that your property is having a seepage pit. We would not necessarily grant you a new license come twenty-five unless we start this process and making making fixes. So if they are informed, that gives them this rest of this year to start the process in deciding which route they want to go, hiring engineers to make design plans, start all that process. So hopefully, the very least, they know twenty-five, they will have a new system. And if like, if we know that, hey, they're going to have a new system June of twenty-five, I think it's pretty reasonable to grant them a license, knowing that they are have gone gone through the effort to make this system better than it was. And then if they haven't done anything to the system by twenty-six, then they're like, hey, you've had a year plus to make these changes and make these fixes. You know, until such time as you get this fixed, we can't issue you a license.
Do these have to be, necessarily have to be buried or can they be kind of out of the ground, but you would cover them maybe, or is there any circumstance like that? I'm just thinking of weird grading on certain parcels.
There oftentimes, uh, what you might be describing would be a mounded system. We, there are requirements that the, where the wastewater is entering the soil has to be a minimum of four feet above any limiting layer. So if, so you have high groundwater or really clay soils or really high bedrock or something, you can more or less make, instead of burying the system, you more or less set the system at grade and bring dirt over top of it. So it's still buried, but it's it's higher up to avoid any sort of limiting layer that might impact its functionality.
If I was a seepage pit owner, I would argue that like, could I get a short-term rental license for reduced occupancy level? Have you thought about that as a solution?
I don't think we've talked about that. That would, we could certainly look at that. Because reasonably thinking of fewer people are using less ways, creating less wastewater, having less of an impact. We could explore that.
Yeah, I would think about that, because again, that like faced with this cost, I would seek other options.
Yeah, no, that that's a good idea, we can, we can definitely explore that.
I'm not advocating for that, I'm just anticipating.
Yeah.
Things people might.
Push back on?
Push back, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Would staff's regulation maintain like no seepage pit? Rule?
That is what we are recommending. Currently, we all already with the transfer title program, and so when people are purchasing homes that have septic systems, they need an inspection. And if there's a, seepage pits found and they are functioning, the sale can proceed. But if the, if the home, let's say, was the, the system was really originally designed for a three-bedroom house and some point in the last thirty years, another bedroom was added, now the occupancy of the house is greater, now that system is is at a lower capacity than what it's being used as. So we would require that system to be upgraded. If the seepage pit had failed, there's standing water, we'd have them replace it. So we already currently are trying to phase out seepage pit usage at the transfer title program. But this is, I think, another way to al- also increase the number of healthy productive modern systems that we have in our county. Because if we, right now, we have twenty or less than around twenty percent of our housing stock is seepage pits. You know, if we extrapolate that across the county, that's hundreds and hundreds of systems that have outdated treatment, soil treatment areas. So we can't fix them all, that's not feasible financially, let alone regulatorily. So trying to find methods in which we can, you know. So trying to find methods in which we can, you know, get better systems in our county, keep our water clean. You know, with the least harm and the least impact possible.
But this, I mean, to this would be, this is a higher standard for short term rentals than.
Than long term or primary residences.
Definitely, and as you said, I had an opening slide, yeah, I mean, yeah, but, yeah.
Okay, can we look at that? I'm thinking on ninety-one where the water level is so high, you know, or I mean. Would we, and any next steps to further kind of crack down on compliance and environmental issues to other areas?
Um.
To looking at areas that.
In terms of different regulations that would identify seepage pits?
But I mean, I just, I I guess I would, okay, let me narrow that down a little bit more, even like eh new, any new construction that might happen in those places. They already have to be a a modern system, okay, okay.
Yeah.
And in a lot of those places, we do see the mound systems because of the groundwater in that area as well. So, um, you know, we're dealing with one ninety-one zone hay and wetlands and we've got a lot of challenges in that area. So we already have um new, any new builds in that area are are a little more challenged anyway.
Is it, well, yeah, and then I say that and I'm like, okay, the solution to pollution is dilution, but or, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, maybe, yeah, I wonder what, I'm anyway, you don't have to answer, but what's the threshold of like, does it go into the system? And that's kind of actually allowing it to filter, like the water system? In the naturally occurring water system or is it too potent or something?
It's. So the wastewater coming in, you know, has viruses, heavy metals, you know.
Plastics, any.
High plastics, pharmaceuticals, you know, high levels of like primarily nitrates. And those those things definitely exist in the natural environment and find their way into the natural environment. What we are concerned primarily about is that those those substances and their interaction with well water.
Yeah.
So right now, modern systems as they go in need to be at least a hundred feet from a a well. You know, and that's just from well-treated modern systems producing great effluent out of the bottom. They still need to be a hundred feet from the well. Older systems didn't necessarily have that oversight and that expectation, and so they're, especially like in the Twin Lakes area. Those wells are all over themselves and their wastewater treatment systems are all over themselves. And so down there, we definitely have some concerns, but you know, the concern with allowing these systems to continue is that. You know, there's there's contamination of well water, but we aren't necessarily looking for that. Unless homeowners are actively testing their own wells, we're not identifying problems.
Yeah.
You know, so this is a, hopefully, a way that we can reduce the number of systems that are not functioning as well as they should. Without requiring everyone to test their wells every year or whatever it may be.
Well, even with the well testing, when we talk to Chuck at the state, um, you we may not be able to identify. The impact even from the 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 site well, you know, there it would have to be a greater degree of analysis. To be able to detect potentially the impact from the seepage pit outside of 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 the well on the property. So, um, because we had first thought about one, so we really looked down that, um, David did a great job and we talked to, as you can tell. And um, we talked to the state too about was there some way, because we have such an impact. Of determining um some different attributes um specific to properties with seepage pits. Could we do a water quality test on the well? Could we look at an age qualifier? Could we look at, so you know, um, David spent a lot of time researching, like, are there other options? Because this is going to be one of the most contentious aspects of the policy that we bring forward. So we really wanted to try to see is there any other way to qualify or or variables that that might give us a, you know. So I think, you know, we've really landed on um disallow or allow, um, disallowing, you know, what are the what are the remedies for property owners? And trying to identify, you know, that pre-treatment on the right or replacement of the field on the left.
In that, in that list, sorry to capture all that, like the the things you looked at yourselves and with the state, I mean, I could also imagine. Yeah, like the Twin Lakes map of like overlapping roles of septic systems, like this scarred in my memory.
The raindrops?
Yeah. But, I mean, I could imagine like a different rule based on um uh, you know, proximity to other properties. I mean, if you're on ten acres and there ones within a quarter or half a mile of your sys- of your system. I mean, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I I think how we worded the the SDR policy. Is that there will be an environmental health review of the septic system. And then um in these regulations, I think we, the blanket statement is seepage pits are not allowed. But we could certainly have some sort of, like, if there's an engineer that says, hey. This is not harming you, this is not harming the natural environment, we have some official who is accountable to a higher authority saying, hey. This is okay.
Yeah.
Then I feel like as long as there's an engineer or some sort of higher authority that approves this. With a higher level education and experience than myself. I think that is justifiable to make some sort of exceptions there. But, you know, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a doctor, um, so I don't necessarily, wouldn't necessarily feel comfortable. You know, approving or allowing something that I can't. I don't know, proof is okay, you know, so if we, if a property owner wanted to dispute that and could. You know, reasonably have some documentation that back them up, cool, let's let's go with that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But the burden of proof being on the property owner to prove that they are not causing harm.
I mean, I would say kind of, you put it very well, this is a method in which to continue to improve. Systems overall and as is and a lot of how we respond to complaints or, you know, even. Other regulations, um. I think here, I would be, I would be comfortable maintaining the proposal. And I would feel fine justifying that to um an angry SDR license seeker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they're exacerbating, you know, they're they're utilizing their property kind of outside maybe. Um, expectations of a neighborhood or whatnot and. Creating a bigger impact and exacerbating potential issues, so for whatever that, for what that is worth to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you for this, this is always very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what's our next steps with this?
Next steps, um, so the public, um, uh, public notice period is twenty-two days. The notice went out in the paper, I believe, last week um to meet that uh SDR notice period uh until the twenty-second. So at that point, that date would be the public hearing in which public comments would be, you know, more or less this presentation to the public. Potentially on a shorter period of time, since we've already discussed a lot of it. Provide opportunity for public comments, um, and then depending on your your decision, I would take that um notice to the states. Um, and then forty-five days after the state receives the notice of approval, projection, they would, then it would go into effect. So if we, so more or less, beginning of April, these new regulations have approved, take effect.
Applying to short term, right?
Yeah, specifically in this, hopefully more narrow field, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Great.
I already sent these proposed to the states, um, because they get to weigh in and they did not have any objections. Um, I can send you guys that letter if you'd like.
That'll be helpful, I'll definitely mention that during the meeting.
Yeah.
For public knowledge, yeah.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Cool.
Great. Yeah.
How's your comfort?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
No, a lot of my questions are just like, I'm just trying to anticipate what a angry homeowner.
Yeah. Yeah, this, it certainly will impact a fair number of people.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And if people have to replace their treatment system and we have to have to have a variance hearing on that. That is taking a consideration of this.
Yeah, so if if folks are needing, um, if their site for one reason or another couldn't fit a modern system. It would again need an engineer design, um, and. If they're going with a higher level treatment system, it doesn't necessarily need a variance, um, but it requires more oversight. Whereas like modern septic systems, once they are installed and set in the ground, they get pumped out every once in a while. But they don't really need maintenance much.
Sure.
High level treatment systems need to be main, um, state requires that they are reviewed a main yearly basis. By the a third party maintenance technician, because they have, you know, electric devices and pumps. And all sorts of extra fun gadgets that need to be maintained for the system to work.
Okay.
So there becomes an operation and maintenance pro- program component. If folks are going to be needing the higher level treatment systems.
Okay.
Is the, does the higher level treatment system include the, I mean, it has that tank, but. Does that then replace a tank and the thing altogether, it's all now in one?
Um, there's still a field, but the field is less important because what is coming out of the tank is is so much.
Is so much.
Yeah, yeah, so in this scenario of the house.
So you don't have a septic tank in this higher level treatment system?
No. It'd be, this would be replacing the old old tank that was there, or. You if they use one of the systems that can be inserted into the existing tank, um, that could be an option as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good.
Absolutely. Any, if you guys have any more questions or thoughts, I'm I'm here all week.
No, this is good. I'm in anticipating a lot of questions, but.
Yeah, I mean, that is a.
Maybe like Twin Lakes area.
Non-trivial number.
Yeah.
But it's good that we done our homework, we know.
Yeah, I didn't really think about that.
The Twin Lakes area?
Well, I mean, of course, I always think about that with this conversation, but I didn't really think about whether that was like twenty out of the twenty-three.
I don't know.
So the thankfully, the what, the the short term rental license holders in like the village of Twin Lakes. I can think of like maybe, there's like five to seven actually in the village, I wanna say. And I think only a couple of those um have modern systems. Within the last three or four years, they put in the modern systems that needed variances. There are a couple though that definitely do have seepage pits, but it's definitely not the majority. It's out of like seven, there might be two that have a seepage pit, because so many people over the last couple of years have replaced systems.
We've seen a lot of variance requests in that area and just in particular because of. Systems that are within close proximity to a well.
Yeah.
Um, but one thing I was thinking we could do is just map out where the seepage pits are SDR wise. And hopefully give you guys a visual of the area that.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
Alright.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you guys.
So we'll see you on the twenty-second.
Yeah.
Do you want to adjourn us?
Oh, yes, we are adjourned.
Okay.